Check one, two. Go stand by those flowers, would you please? Okay, it's working. So let me just transition to... And wave your arms or something over there, please. Zoom camera. Do it again, please. Yep, I think we're good.
Check one, two, check. Check one, two, check. Check one, two, check.
Check one, two, three, four. 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 Check one, two, three, four.
Thanks. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the June 25 regularly scheduled Board of Education minutes. Carrie, can you please call roll?
Mr. Braden.
Yes.
Mrs. Hopmeyer is absent today. Ms. McKnight.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Stamm.
Here.
Can we all rise to pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're now at item number two, is Board of Education minutes from last month. Anybody have any questions? If not, I need a motion to approve the minutes. Shelley moves. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Jeff seconds. Carrie, when you're ready.
Mr. Braden.
Yes.
McKnight.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Stamm.
Yes.
All right. Item number three, treasurer's report. Carrie?
First item on the agenda is to approve the May 2025 financials as presented. Under item B is to approve the donations as listed. We have $9,000 that has received that is funding a summer learning program at Waterville Primary, so I wanted to highlight that. And as always, we are very grateful for our donations. We had the mural at Monclova Primary finished, so the rental equipment or the scaffolding, the lift for that was donated, so that value on there is included as well. It wasn't a cash donation, but it was basically...
In kind.
In kind. So I'll highlight those two. So this is, this meeting runs later, or later in the year than most of our meetings that usually take place the second Monday of the month, and that is due to the end of the fiscal year for the fiscal year '24 through June 30th through '25. So the next few motions that I'm going to have the board approve are related to all of our June 30th end of fiscal year documents. The first one is approving the final appropriation resolution for fiscal year '24, '25. When I have the board approve the account modifications in the first part of the agenda under monthly financials, this combines them all into one, and it prints out a whole new appropriation resolution. So we do that in September. That's approving temporary or permanent appropriations for the fiscal year, because I'll have you do temporaries for next year here shortly. Then in September, you approve permanent appropriations, and then these are final appropriations that reflect any changes. We did have changes to our appropriations throughout the fiscal year that equated to about a million dollars in increases. A couple of things that threw our appropriations off this year was we received the science of reading stipend that we paid staff members, this time last year I had the board approve a resolution or a memorandum of understanding for those that had to do the science of reading that we would pay them a stipend rather than listing all their names in the amount. They were tiered at what amount they were reimbursed. Well, we had $225,000 that we paid out between the stipend and the retirement and Medicare cost, but then we were reimbursed that amount during the fiscal year. The problem is, is I was going to post it, I created a budget line item and thinking I would track it easier that way, and then post it as a reduction of an expenditure when we got the money, but the state wants to be sure we can highlight that money that they gave us, so we had to put it into a special revenue cost within the general fund, so it threw off my appropriations. So that was one thing I had to increase on salaries. And then this year was a little bit of challenges. We brought back all the S R people, which was a big factor, so that was the other increase on that, along with some payouts with people leaving. So other than that, the good news is, is that our revenues exceeded, or yes, our revenues exceeded your expenditures, and that's what we wanted. You don't want it to go the other way, because that would be deficit spending. So even though we had a lot of change this year, I felt it was a little higher than normal with the appropriations, we are still not deficit spending, so that's a plus. The next is to approve the final amended certificate for fiscal year '25. Our revenue was actually up 3.7 million over last year, and that is due to receiving NEXUS revenue. And then the, by us falling below the 20 mil floor, the growth we saw from that, that was the difference. So those two things brought that revenue up. And actually, that, that revenue from the 20 mil floor was half of a year, so it was about $1.9 million. So that was just the first half of a year, because taxes run on a calendar year, schools operate on a fiscal year, so we're always like six months behind, so. Under item E is to approve, oh, in the final amended certificate just finalizes all the revenues that we've received for the year, so justifying our need for those, so. Under item E is to approve temporary appropriations. This is a simple document that basically allows us to run a payroll July 1st, but it's just 30% of our current, the appropriations that you're just approving, less federal and state grants, it's 30% of that to start us out for the fiscal year July 1, and then in September, you'll come back and approve the entire appropriation resolution for all funds, and then we'll start the process over for next fiscal year. Under item F is to approve our property fleet and liability insurance. This year, we had four, we went out for bid for it, we went out to six different companies. Well, one was, I should say five different companies. Two declined to submit a proposal, and the other two were increases of over $105,000. We ended up renewing with the Ohio School Plan, which is the Highland Insurance Company, at $166,145, and that was only an $18,792 increase over last year, which is really good considering the trend. But we've been working with Ohio School Plan now for the last two years, and we have been very pleased with their services and their response time on items. And I feel like sometimes it seems like we have so many claims during the year, I always get a little nervous with this, but we've been doing pretty good so far, so I would ask that the board approve that. Under item G is to approve our workers' compensation group rating. This is for the unemployment charges, and we do group rating. It is a savings. I did have that in your agenda. It's cost us around, excuse me, it costs us around, it's $2,100 a year to participate in this. And if you remember, I think at the May board meeting, I had you switch our workers' comp over to Sedgwood. So we're already with them, but this is just, this actually is renewing effective January 1st, but we always have to do it in advance. So this actually takes place January 1st, but I have to have it approved effective for the fiscal year July 1. So like if you looked at, I had it as an attachment on there, it's for seven, or excuse me, 1-1-26 through 12-31-26. So, and the group rating just combines all the unemployments together to get us a lesser rate. Like it used to be around 1%, and now we're paying about .68% or 68 cents per dollar. So it's, it's definitely worth it to do it. We've gone between group rating and group retro, but we're back to group rating this year again, so. Item H is to approve some membership renewals. We have the Ohio School Council's membership at a renewal cost of 923.42. The Ohio School Councils, this is a software system that we use to make sure we are not dealing with any vendors, or it's basically a fraud prevention system, or that we're not paying someone that's got an inappropriate... paying someone that's got an inappropriate social security number, EIN number, all those type of things. That's a renewal cost of $4,142. And then the Alliance for High Quality Education at a renewal cost of $4,000. And these are all for 7-1-25 through 6-30-26. Item I is to award the Junior High Freezer Project to, or the Fallen Timbers in Junior High Freezer and Cooler Project to Van Tassel Construction Company at a cost of $228,900. This is per the bid open on June 17th. And this will be paid out of food service. So we will, usually we have those things coming out of our PI, so this is, this is, this is good. And then item J is to approve the Monclova Christian Academy requests for their items of disposal. This is an annual process that they do. Usually we have one from Lyle, too. Did not receive theirs, so I would expect to see that in the next month or two. And then under item K is to approve a scholarship fund in the amount of $100. This is just a startup. It's for an essay and this is from a former graduate. And you did approve her, that donation under the donations listed on the agenda, sorry. Then I, I just want to highlight a couple of things. And as you know, I've been trying to keep you updated on the biennial budget. And I was hopeful that we would have something from the Conference Committee that was yesterday. And as of 11:24 or 11:25 last night, there was still nothing shared and nothing yet this morning. So my plan is to share a couple of things, but then I'll let you know what the rumor is. And we'll just have to wait until we know. I was working on that when I first came in this morning and then got sidetracked. So the budget that was on the table, that was in Conference Committee, was, one of the things they were doing was to do in a way with inside millage. Inside millage is set by the Budget Commission and Anthony Wayne received 4.3 mils of inside millage. 2.2 went to the general fund and 2.1 went to the permanent improvement fund. That is how we fund our purchase of textbooks, buses, vehicles, the roof repairs, the roof replacements, the track replacements, all the things that we've been approving over the last two months out of our PI fund, about $4 million, is funded through that PI. So it was a great concern that if they do away with inside millage, we were looking at a 6.7 reduction in funding between those two. So we would have lost 3.4 in the general fund, 3.4 million, and then 3.3, excuse me, 3.3 in PI. And I might have, I didn't think I just reversed those. I did. 3.4 in PI, or 3.3 in general fund. But without that money, we do not have a source of revenue to do those maintenance projects. So that was very stressful for me. And the fact that if we would lose 3.4 million or 3.3 million out of the general fund, that was pretty much true because the district is ending the year. Even when I talked about the increase in revenue and the expenditures or appropriations, we're still ending the year with right around where we thought we'd be at 2.3 million. That's not a lot. No, it's not. And I have three payrolls in July and a payroll's about 1.3 million. So you can see I'm going to be a little short there. We're going to be real appreciative of those advances from the county auditor, so. But that was, that was very stressful because not knowing what we would do. And then they were also talking about, so we were on the ballot in November and that is when the levy lost by four votes on the recount. But it also put the district at the 20 mil floor. We wanted, you know, we let the taxpayers vote on that so it could be decided if it passed, that would mean Class 1, which is residential and egg, and Class 2, commercial and industry, pay that. But if it failed, that all fell on just Class 1 because Class 1 was at the 20 mil floor. So it only applied to them. With the failure, we will receive over a calendar year and eventually a fiscal year, an increase of 3.7 million dollars. And that is, basically the levy was for 3.3 million. So we, you know, and we knew that going in. Of course, we had no idea. It wasn't until later in the year that I got that from the Ohio Department of Taxation. I, I've never had that confirmed by the Auditor's Office, but, so that, that brought a great concern because I'm just, you know. Then the other thing that I, I was always kind of, was actually very frustrating. They were putting in, one of the proposals was out of the house that they cap the carryover that districts can have at 30%. So you can only have 30, a carryover, cash balance carryover, I just said ours is 2.3. You can only have a cash balance carryover of 30% of your previous year's operating expenditures. Well, that doesn't affect us because we're one of 16 schools that fall under 10%. Our carryover is only 4.2%. But there's districts like Josh Williams, our state legislator, you know, they said transfer money into your 035, which is a severance fund, so you can pay severance out of that. Transfer money into an 070, which is a maintenance fund. Well, that's great for districts. They're passing resolutions and they're transferring $10 million in there. We don't have that problem. I wish we had money that we could fund our severance pay because we fund that out of the general fund. And, you know, it causes an influx because it's, you know, sometimes we don't know someone's retiring until after school's out. You know, they don't want to announce it. They just want to keep quiet. They want to end the year. Bye, see you next year. And then we get a letter, you know, three days later. And so those things happen and that's okay. But just a lot of, oh, and the other thing is they wanted to do away with the funding formula that has been, was implemented the last budget cycle. So needless to say, this has been probably one of the worst budgets I've ever been part of or been through. Now rumor has it, this is just rumor, that they are not doing anything with the inside millage. Huge relief as, like I said, that was 6.7 million to us. And then I'm not sure about the 20 mil floor. I do think they are making changes to that because they said that there is something about inflation that you can't grow more than, districts can't increase their revenue from property tax reappraisals more than the inflation. So for instance, when we went through our last reappraisal in Lucas County, we saw an average of 20, or actually Anthony Wayne was like 31.1%. They're saying that those increases can't exceed what inflation is. And again, this is just rumor. And then I did hear that they were keeping in the funding formula, but I don't know what that means. They're funding it at, it's still not being funded at 100%, but I, I heard that that's back in. And then the 30% carryover is 40%. Again, that does not affect us though. But still, it's, it's crazy that taxpayers vote for a levy so their school can have these monies to operate. And then you have the state coming and saying, no, the Budget Commission needs to roll back millage and not collect that revenue. The voters already passed. So it's been a big mess. The other thing is, did you have a question, Shelley?
I just read yesterday that that cap might be set at 50% now rather than 30.
Right. And rumor has it that it's 40, but it's just rumor. I have nothing in concrete. The thing is, is I was very hopeful. I was watching this last night. I looked at 1 o'clock this morning. I looked at 4 o'clock this morning. And there was nothing there. So we, we have a letter ready to go out to our community based on the before rumor part that I told you, but now I feel like we need to get, get something a little bit more concrete. Now, it still has to go to the governor for signature and veto. And then supposedly it can go back to Conference Committee based on the percentage of vetoes or signatures. I'm not sure how that part works yet. But we have till Monday, December, or November, excuse me. I have way too many dates going on in my head. Monday, June 30th before we know anything, so.
The one thing that I do want to share is when Carrie was sharing about the inside millage and, and the possible loss of that money and that impact that that would have on our permanent improvement projects, I do want to share that all of our permanent improvement projects right now that we are doing this summer, that money has been allocated. And we have, and, you know, we have the money for those projects that are currently happening, so.
Yeah. Those purchase orders are in place. They're part of our carryovers for next year because we haven't started paying on any of those. But I honestly, in hindsight, if we would have known that this was at risk, because this has not been an issue, I mean, that we would be losing this revenue until like two months ago, but we definitely probably would have waited till, even though it would have not been good timing, we wouldn't have done the projects that we are doing. Because it's basically, we're doing two years worth of projects this year just due to the transition in staff and bringing Neil Raymond on and, you know, him getting used to the district and learning his way. But, you know, this is two years. So this is a little extensive of what we're doing. This won't be every year that we do spend this amount of money on projects. However, it's different now when we're, whether or not we're going to have the money to do projects too. So I'm very hopeful that, you know, hopefully the rumors are true. So we'll just wait and see. And, and again, as soon as I find those things out, I, I will share because, I mean, it's, it's vital to the district. You know, we would be faced with, well, the other thing, and I sound like Debbie Downer today. I really do feel like, my name's Carrie, but I do feel like a Debbie Downer. Another thing is the Attorney General has endorsed a petition to abolish real estate taxes for the November ballot that would go out before the State of Ohio for a vote. That sounds well and good, but their motive is, is to get it so it's not all on the property taxpayers and it's on income. It's going to force districts to not be able to pass real estate taxes and then it will be an income tax levy. Well, that's a huge struggle too because you have, you know, we have a variety of wealth in this district and as do our districts. You know, Perrysburg was just sick over this and we thought, well, we'll never, we'll never make it. So just hopeful that we can put a lot of that stuff behind us. I'm hoping to get some relief prior to June 30th. But again, that's what I know. And I, I hate to share all the bad news, but the good news is, is we still have $2 million at the end of the year, so.
Correct.
And we didn't deficit spend.
That's right.
Any questions?
No? All right. Well, then we need a motion to approve.
I will move to approve.
I move. There we go. Shelley seconds. Carrie, when you're ready.
Mr. Baden?
Yes.
Ms. McKnight?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Thank you.
I did enjoy the dramatic effect you had there. All right, moving on. I have number four Superintendent's Education Report.
Before we begin with our presentation, I did just want to share, talked a little bit about this at our last meeting about the success of our athletic programs this year. And we had 16 N L championships. Along with that, we had four team sports go to state. We had several individuals in other sports, you know, compete at state and so forth. And so just wanted to kind of update on that. You know, since last meeting, we did have the softball team. They made it to the state finals and it was with great pride and pleasure that was able to watch, you know, Coach Donley and the baseball team win the state championship. The game didn't start till about, the game didn't start till about 10:15 and it was probably about 12:15 when it got over and so forth, but every bit of it was worth it just to see the excitement. And actually, I just want to commend the coach and, you know, players and so forth too. They, they really were a class act all the way through it and it was just really a great time to be a general. So along with that, I also just wanted to share thoughts and prayers today to the Reed and Donell family. We have Suzie Donell. That is, actually, her funeral is today. And so we want to keep all of them in our, in our thoughts and prayers. At this time, I'd like to introduce Brian Nepper. Brian is going to share some information on the Blue Creek Sports and Entertainment and kind of a proposal that, that he's seeking.
I said that the agenda printed only has odd pages, not the even pages. So they might not have that.
It's okay. It's okay now? Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, for, is this on? Check. All right. If any of you don't know my, know me, my name is Brian Nepper. I'm a graduate of Anthony Wayne, 1997. I'm the president and CEO of Blue Creek Sports and Entertainment. It's a, a new venture that I started here in the last couple of years. We are a registered LLC in the State of Ohio. We're formulated a little bit different than most companies. It's more of a shareholder concept. One of our initial shareholders is out in the crowd as well, Mark Pelocic, who has his own company called Scape Sketch, which did the displays here that we have of our proposed facility on the property that we are proposing to purchase from the school, school district. So I wanted to thank Superintendent, Treasurer and the, and the Board for giving me this opportunity to present in front of you. Without further ado, here's my presentation. Our vision is to establish a state-of-the-art indoor multi-sports facility that fosters community engagement, promotes health and wellness, and provides a safe year-round environment for athletes of all ages and skill levels. The value to the Anthony Wayne community, this facility would provide local facilities for Anthony Wayne youth all the way up to the high school level. It will promote development locally in terms of other businesses and keep money in the district as opposed to sending it to Perrysburg and Rossford. The state-of-the-art facilities would be built without taxpayer burden. Money from outside the Anthony Wayne community will be spent in our community. There will be all kinds of people coming in from, usually typically probably from the west of us currently that are going to be staying around and spending money at our restaurants and other, other businesses in the Anthony Wayne community. We have an opportunity for local investment. So far, all of the initial shareholders, which are A-class shareholders, are graduates of Anthony Wayne. They're all local. They all live here. They all have kids either that just graduated or are still in the system. So we're very invested, not only in our local community, but in our local schools. And we look forward to bringing on future investors with the same mindset and the same background. Also, we'll have cooperatives with the high school, hopefully, potential jobs and other projects that they can work on. So the question is, why now? Why build a facility like this? And we'll, I'll show later on what the facilities are going to look like. But currently, our indoor facilities cannot meet current demand. If anybody has any children that are playing travel or youth sports in the area, it's very hard to get practice time in any type of gymnasium. If you're a hockey player, good luck. There's no indoor track anywhere that I know of unless it's a YMCA or a college. Getting into sports domes for soccer practice depends on who's paying for it. So I know I'm an Anthony Wayne United coach, as are some of the people in the crowd here. It's very difficult to get practice facilities, especially at late notice. The youth sports in, in the north require indoor venues. Once it gets to about October, you know, it could be 30 degrees or rainy or snowing and that lasts until probably two weeks ago. Then it becomes 95 degrees and then you still look for indoor venues. So we're unique compared to the south where... So we're unique compared to the south, where we could use indoor facilities practically year-round. Market research, which, this is market research that I've done and others have done, building similar facilities, it shows the timing is right. I've been working on this concept now for five years. If anyone knows, a couple of years ago, there was another venture that was about to be built in Waterville. I was ready to announce then, and I stopped because of that. I didn't want all the air to be taken away, and I wanted to put this on its own merit and give it to the public to see and people judge it on that. So a couple of years behind, but that just means it's even more needed now. We have a group of local investors currently committed to this vision, and viable land is disappearing right now. If anyone just, if you're driving out in the district, seems like all the land is for sale, and most of it is becoming residential, so. If we're not able to find land here soon, we're, we're going to have to build elsewhere, so. The direct value to Anthony Wayne schools, sorry that didn't come up as good as I thought, we're here to support one of the top athletic programs in the state. I think that's, you can't argue that at this point. As Superintendent Herman just mentioned, we had 16 programs that won NLL championships, including the baseball state championship. This, this, this vision and these facilities would only serve to support that and keep us up there at the top. This would remove the new facility's burden from taxpayer. As some of you probably remember, I think it was three years ago now, or two and a half years ago, that there was a sports levy, sports facility levy that was put out, and it was resoundly voted down. Our goal would be to supplement Anthony Wayne High School and our, and our other programs, so that that doesn't have to be built by Anthony Wayne schools or the taxpayer. We'd have opportunities for our top athletes to train at home. We are in preliminary talks with several personal trainers that work currently with our athletes, and this would give them an opportunity to be closer to campus in order to do that personal training. Adjunct businesses are going to be providing jobs for students. Once we're done with all, all three phases of our sports facilities, there will be eight tenant spaces as a part of this, that are all sports-related, that will undoubtedly be hiring high school students from Anthony Wayne to work. We also look to possibly employ students either part-time or when they graduate full-time within our facilities. And then provide a return investment to the Board of Education. Obviously, the Treasurer just spoke of our funding issues possibly going into the future. I'm here to give some light and say, hey, we're going to try to put some money back into your pocket, where we can supplement the Board going through the future, so. Additional stakeholders in this venture, Anthony Wayne Youth Foundation is a huge part of this. I've met with them several times. They are committed to basically filling our facility year-round, was what I, what I was quoted. Probably almost every hour, we could fit some part of our teams or our sports. There are 27 teams or sports organizations that are covered under the Anthony Wayne Youth Foundation currently. Other youth, local youth sports organizations that may not be in the Youth Foundation, and also in other districts such as Otsego, Liberty Center, Swanton, and so forth, would be using these facilities. Anthony Wayne Community, White House, Waterville, Monclova, we will have our facilities open and available for anyone that's able to rent it. There will also be community events that will be for all, all children, all ages. And then we'll have several national sports organizations that will be using these facilities as well. I've already had several semi-professional sports teams reach out and ask if they can use these facilities as their home base, which obviously, the higher level we go, the more we can charge, which brings in a lot more money that we can put into our facilities that are going to benefit our local community, so. So let's get down to what it actually looks like. I don't know if, can we adjust it so it drops down a little bit? I don't know if we can, no, okay. Yeah, it's kind of clipping off the top, so. Oh, screen, yeah. There we go. That's good. Thank you. Appreciate it. My background, I'm a, I'm a structural engineer, so I've, I've done most of these designs myself, with the help of Mark as well. So this has been in the making for some time. I have operated my own facilities primarily for wrestling over the last two decades, both in Tennessee and Ohio. And in the process, I've always wanted to do something like this. And once I started talking to individuals in the local community, what was originally supposed to be one building that had wrestling and an indoor soccer facility, kind of ballooned into this larger vision that incorporates most, if not all, sports. So our Phase 1 is what we call the arena. We look to break ground in 2026 with an opening in either fall of '26 or spring of '27. This will include three basketball courts that can be used as six volleyball courts, a format wrestling arena with fixed seating. It would be close to 1,200 seats. Now, obviously, that can be used for other mat sports, such as cheerleading, tumbling, MMA, Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu, karate tournaments, things like that. It will also have a three mat practice facility for wrestling. We do have a biddy program that's not a part of the Youth Foundation, that struggles to find space. Last year, we had 130 boys and girls in the biddy program that I helped coach, and we could barely fit them in the, in the space allotted for them at the high school. So that's one of the areas that we're kind of not as good at. We haven't won an NLL championship in a while in that, in that sport, and that's where we're looking to try to bring that up a little bit. We'll also have another building that's all turf, that will focus on soccer, football, rugby, lacrosse, and personal training. I may have missed some other sports that we can use that for, but it's pretty much endless with a turf field. There will be a dedicated 14,300 square foot baseball and softball arena that'll be separated from where you see the soccer facilities there. I've worked with Coach Donley on dimensions and types of equipment that we'd be putting in here. This would allow us to have an entire actual infield practice, as if they're outside, while they have two batting cages going on simultaneously. That's, we added additional space to accommodate that. And then there's facilities in the middle, so there's, you can imagine, there's two big buildings, which you could, afterwards, if you'd like to look at the displays here, it kind of shows you what they look out like from the outside. They're rather large buildings. You need them for all this space, but in our, our other buildings, we have our mechanicals, our concessions, our restrooms, locker rooms, things like that. Everything you would need to host multiple tournaments at the same site at the same, same time, so. This is what it looks like from overhead. Again, compliments of Mark Pelocic. He does a great job with these renderings. A huge space compared to what we have available right now in the area. There is nothing, nothing like this, anywhere in the Midwest that I can find. There's, there's domes, there's smaller sports facilities, but nothing that has all of these sports incorporated. So we'll talk about the uniqueness of this. It will be the only format wrestling arena in the area. It's really the only one that I can find anywhere, United States. We'd be able to host state and national level tournaments and address an area of weakness for Anthony Wayne schools. We could host multiple tournaments for different sports on the same day. We look to, we'll have a sports travel agency wing built in our facility here, where people can come and say, you want to take a trip to the Super Bowl? It's something that we're going to have as a wing of our business. That's why we're sports and entertainment. But that's going to be something for our local community as well. We'll have unique tenants within the expanded space. I've been talking with local companies already that are ready to make the move. One of them is the Dance Center of Northwest Ohio, which currently is in a very small space in White House, and I've already designed them a 4,000 square foot facility, which would allow them to expand close to double their students. So we're looking to bring in tenants that will supplement the sporting experience and make it more of a family-type event. I've also talked to a female fitness gym that would be coming in. So the goal would be, come and drop your kids off, maybe one goes to dance, one goes to soccer, and mom goes and has an hour of fitness on her own as well. So this is going to be kind of like a one-stop center for sports. We also have a cooperative with local businesses to expand. When I say that, there's certain restaurants in the area that we're looking to incorporate and bring them in, especially on weekends, where instead of it just being a concession stand, it would be, just, you could think of the company that's across from the school, where they'd be facilitating, make a lot more money off of people that are coming in from the outside of the community, and have, have it so you don't have to leave the facility right away to be able to eat. We're also working with each sport in the Anthony Wayne community in order to design the facilities. So I've already spoken, I've spoken with the baseball team, spoken with soccer. Obviously, I've, I've coached wrestling, baseball, and soccer as well, so have a lot of knowledge there. But we're working with all the different teams in order to try to design that to their specifications, so that's state-of-the-art and everything they would ever want, and not have to go anywhere else. So, and then we'll also have a dedicated 3,200 square foot community space that's for rent or reservation, depending on if it's a public entity, it would be free to use. If it's someone that wants to rent it for a birthday party or something like a graduation party, it would be there for rent. That's part of our tenant space. Phase 2, and this is, you know, speaking to people, this becomes the controversial part. Some people like domes, some people don't. The, the benefit of having a dome is it's a lot of space, and it doesn't cost as much money to, to build this type of facility as a, as a normal traditional facility. We look to do this and have this up and running by 2029 or 2030. It would be a 240 by 360 by 60-foot-tall turf dome. When I talk about innovative utility design, I'm already in talks with a company to use geothermal heat in the concrete slab. If anyone's been in any of the domes around here, they're usually 20 degrees warmer in the winter than outside, and about 20 degrees cooler than the temperature outside in the summer, and it's. Not fun. It's not fun coaching in 40-degree temperatures inside a dome, and we look to take that out. The geothermal heat provides heat basically by convection up to eight to 10 feet above the floor, and it will significantly lower our, our utility costs. The 360 feet allows us to have an entire football field regulation game inside, with full end zones at any level, whether that be Anthony Wayne High School, local colleges, or semi-professional football team. Obviously, that gives us the ability to, to host soccer teams at any age level as well. And we can partition those, if you've been in any of the other domes, you can partition those, sometimes up to, you know, there's four in one. We'd be able to get six small fields inside of ours. And we won't have any other facilities in there. All of our restrooms and everything else and mechanicals will be in the building that's already there, so. There's also a potential for an indoor track. We recently added that into our design, and I look forward to having that. I, I think that's going to be very valuable. I know you guys are building a new track this summer as well, but as that, as we get that new track, I see that as an area that we can address for, not the girls, the girls have always been good, but the boys are a little bit substandard. I ran a track here, I know, so. You know, that's an area of weakness that I think we can address as well with our facility. You'll have multiple, multiple sport playing surface to support various sanctioned games and tournaments, whether that be rugby, lacrosse, there's, you can have flag football tournaments in here, where we'd basically be able to make 10 to 12 small football fields for flag football, and host large-scale tournaments that currently are being held in Perrysburg and Rossford, would be held here, keeping all that money locally and bringing in money into the community, so. And we also look to use it more than just for sports. So this is the thing, the local domes, they're usually just used for sports. We're looking to use this for indoor concerts, other type of venues that, kind of thinking outside the box. So whether it be like having trinket sales or, or things like that as well, so. Phase 3, and this is the one where I think there's a lot of people that are excited about this part and wanted this to be Phase 1. There's a reason it's not Phase 1. We call this the ice. This will be 2031, 2032, dependent on revenue and how the economy is going at that time. But this would be a duplicate of Phase 1 in terms of the building itself, and it would have two hockey arenas, the exact same layout that Tam O Shanter has, actually. I stole that, I'm sorry, but, but this will. This will allow us to actually have an Anthony Wayne youth hockey program, which currently we are not able to have, because they don't have facilities to do so. Perrysburg would also be using this facility almost immediately, I've been told, so. This would become, hopefully, the home arena for Anthony Wayne hockey, again, improve on an area of weakness for our, our district, and this is the most sought-after space. The issue is this right here costs, right now, in today's money, it costs between $8 and $12 million to build this type of facility. And $8 to $12 million is not going to be brought in by people using this facility. So that's where we have to build all the other things to try to supplement, so that we can, can actually build this part, so. So the real reason we're coming to you for this presentation, I sat with Village of White House now over the last close to a year, and we identified five parcels of land that we thought would be suitable for a venture like this, and, you know, Village of White House connected me with Superintendent Herman, gave a presentation back, and I think it was February. Just trying to lay, lay these things down, and it came down to the parcel on Dutch, which is currently owned by Anthony Wayne schools. This is what the whole layout looks like. There are actually four phases. Our fourth phase would be a premier entertainment expansion. We don't know what that's going to be originally, in our original location, which was going to be right off of 6424. It was going to be a Topgolf, but that's been passed by, someone's already doing that now. That was three years ago. So we don't know what it's going to be, but it's going to be something that will be valuable to the community, bring in outside money as well, and that will help facilitate and make this, you know, one big unit. So this is the layout from above. This layout requires 25 acres minimum. Now that, there's some things that we're going to do in our design in terms of collecting water, rainwater from our impervious surfaces, which is mostly roof, which I'm looking to collect that water and put it into our toilet systems, where not as much water is going onto the ground, where we won't have to use as much land for reservoirs or retention ponds. But there will be significant pavement, depending on variances we may get. Hopefully, we'll get some of it, it would be gravel to start with. But it's about 25 acres that we need in order to get this done. This is the, these are the parcels that are owned by the schools, local schools. I put the parcel numbers in here, I think you guys have received this before as well, that identify exactly where everything is. You can see the Steeplechase development backs right up to the line that was included. I'm going to walk to the screen real quick. This parcel right here actually extends all the way through to Booker, to this area that we're out right now, where it was proposed to have a school at some point in time, which was shown on the Capital Improvement Plan a couple of years ago. So that's, that's that 45.139 acres is up at the top, which is Booker, which I want to say that the current campus for all three, built three schools is around 50 acres, just to give you an idea. Now, not all of that is usable, because we are in a floodplain. Booker's obviously a lot bigger area, but I wanted to show that that's not even included in this, in this sketch right here. Our 25 acres that we'd be looking to purchase would be this area right here. You have that farm area right here, but it's basically that lot, and then the two areas that are around it, we'd be proposing to use that as a lease opportunity from you guys, and make that outside fields to supplement. we'd be proposing to use that as a lease opportunity from you guys and make that outside fields to supplement Blue Creek, whether it be soccer, football, lacrosse, rugby, whatever, we need to use those four. We would actually, we'd make those, we'd seed those fields, take care of them and open that up for the public in order to use. So that's the actual parcel there. It's twenty-five-point-zero-three acres, works almost perfectly for what we're looking for. Kinda gives you an idea of the layout. When you think of a building like this, each of those buildings is a hundred-and-twenty feet wide by three-hundred-and-sixty long by forty feet high and then you have the dome to match. You think that's pretty big until you put it on farmland out in the middle of nowhere and it doesn't fill a lot of space, believe it or not, so. I believe this is a perfect fit for not only our venture and our local investors, but also for the school system in the area, so. And this, I put on here one of the overviews of what it would look like from Dutch Road and we also have, as I said, displays set out for everybody to look at. So at this time, I'd take any questions from the board. I don't know if we're giving the opportunity to the public to ask questions, but I'd be willing to answer any questions if I have.
One question I'd have, Brian, is I think it's very important also to know like the sustainability-
Yes.
-and so forth. And so what type of, I know that you've shared about doing a business plan and research and so forth. What type of study have you done that shows sustainability?
Well, individually, it's kinda by sport. So when you take each parcel of the phase, there's market research for basketball, there's market research for volleyball, there's, each sport has their own individual identity and prices that we can charge people. I know I spoke with the youth foundation and you as well about our cost. Initially, we'd be looking to charge ninety percent of what is currently being charged elsewhere. Sustainability-wise, that's not gonna pay for the build. Where we're gonna make our money as a company is gonna be the advertisement, larger events, our outside travel agency, personal training, these outside entities that are coming in, potentially the national sports organizations. I will tell you that the initial build for phase one is between five and six million. We are looking to the Port Authority to get special loans on construction, where some of that will be in the form of possible grants, working with other entities such as solar, for solar, putting solar panels on our roofs for our electric, things like that. So what we're looking to do is lower our utility costs long-term, bring in, basically break even on the sports part and the viability, long-term sustainability is gonna come from the ventures, like bringing in those outside restaurants from White House or coffee shops that are gonna be in our facilities and paying as tenant spaces. So it's not a huge markup, obviously, but market research does show that it is viable. It shows that it is needed. I mean, our sports facilities are packed. If they were open twenty-four-seven, they would be used, undoubtedly. People would be there at two in the morning if we left them open, so. You know, as much as I can say the economy is gonna be whatever it is, that's the only thing that we would be concerned with, but you know, that's the risk you take with any business, so.
I know that when we had discussed, had spoken at one time also, that there was going to have to be some work done as far as Waterville Township and White House Village and so forth. Have they made any progress on that?
So I've had preliminary, I've reached out to Waterville Township. Everything that we're doing is allowable by the township. It would just take a rezoning and to be honest, if we purchased the property, we can be annexed by the Village of White House and the talks I've had with them, basically, they're willing to give certain variances if needed, which we're building this. Currently, there aren't any variances that we would need. It would just take a zoning change and we'd be able to do all the things that we currently can. The height restriction in Waterville Township, just the same as Waterville and I believe White House is sixty feet. Why we're at sixty feet, try to take as much space as possible. There's things you have to do to get that, but that's all within the design. But yeah, as soon as we get the land, we're ready to go. So the next phase here would be, you know, if we come to an agreement on land, would be for us to start getting our financing for the construction loans and doing our initial surveying and do the site plan, which we'd be using a local civil engineering company to do so. The least part of it would be a traffic study. As a civil engineer myself, Dutch Road works out pretty well because it's almost in the middle. It takes away a lot of that flow where it'd be backup. You know, basically, backup would occur at the roundabout, if anywhere, which it's a long enough space that, we kinda talked about it. When you let out of school here at, what, at two-forty, is the worst traffic you're gonna have around here. Anything that would be coming in for the dome would be less than that, actually, because we wouldn't be having sports all at the same time, most of the time, so if that makes sense, so. Traffic study, site plan, those would be the next steps along with the long-term construction loans.
So when you're also talking about the site and so forth, does the, your initial cost of the five to six million, does that include like-
That includes the site development. Now, that's just, obviously, that's just estimates. Until we get boots on the ground and find out what we find, you know, it is farmland, so there's, it's less likely to be any issues. I don't think we'll run into any brownfield issues, but you know, it being where it is, I think it's a very good location for low-cost site development, so. But yeah, until we actually get into it and price things out, because I started pricing this out five years ago, so. Prices change, they fluctuate. This is gonna be, the first build is a steel building. If anyone's aware of moment frame structures, it allows for a large, open space with a high ceiling where you don't have to have columns in the middle. So that allows us to do all these things that we're talking about doing along with the dome. So, you know, price of steel, depending on what happens politically or, you know, what else, could be double or half, who knows, so. It really comes down to the GC that we end up picking, which we're trying to stay local as well. Everything that we're doing is gonna be with local investment and local work. So like, we're bound and determined to keep this an investment for the community, so. Do we have any questions for the board yet? Ms. McKnight?
I listened to a couple of things that you said that sit well with me, using the geothermal heat, possible solar panels on the roof, the carbon footprint, you said about the rainwater, coming through with that. I worry a little bit more about the green energy initiatives. Have you thought about solar energy for the parking lot, like for something like that?
Oh, yeah, for as much as we can. The goal would be to not have any utility costs, to be honest, like to use everything naturally. You can't, I can just tell you, we could put the whole roof as solar panel and it still wouldn't be enough energy for everything that's gonna need to be happening, but yeah, we could have a raise, you know, as parking structures. That's stuff we can look at, for sure, but you know, as a civil engineering background myself, I'm always looking for things like that to reduce impervious surface, you know, keep our green space green as much as possible, but. Does that answer your question, or?
The other question that I had is the element of pollution, in terms of light pollution and noise pollution. And have you thought about how lighting would be turned off at night, so the animal structure?
All of our lighting will be, it will be minimal parking lighting, I believe. We'll have kinda recessed lighting is the goal on the architecture at the outside. So if you look at, I wonder if I can, how do I go back? So if you look at, if you look at this diagram right here, the tenant spaces, they'll actually be towards the homes and these will be just normal, like minimal lighting at the doorways. They'll have an awning for them to come in and have a sidewalk dedicated and they'll have their own parking. It's like a, like kind of a boulevard where we plant trees. So most of what you see from outside of our area is gonna be blocked by trees or, you know, berms, things like that. So there should be minimal light pollution for the surrounding area.
That was my final question about the landscaping, to minimize the effect on any more pollution that would come forward, the shading and that would, I would hope that that would be-
Yeah, we wanna try to incorporate as much, you know, trees will be a big factor here as well. There won't be any, I don't foresee there being noise pollution. I don't know if anyone's ever been outside the domes when they're being used. If you're within twenty feet of the dome, you can hear inside pretty clearly, but once you get outside there, it diminishes greatly. I haven't been in a concert in one of those venues, but it's probably less noise pollution than the other option that we were given a couple of years ago, I would say, and would be something that's only on occasion. You know, with fair warning to local citizenry. This location right now, steeplechase is on one side, but on the other side, there's nothing built yet. I think there's two different plots of land that there's nothing been built yet, so. And then to the north is obviously where we are right now, so. Currently, you know, it's not a lot of concern with local residents, things like that, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Hey, Brian. Fantastic presentation. You did a really good job showing this and an exciting project with a couple of young kids. This definitely would be something that's, would be exciting for my family and I'm sure most families that are similar. One question, how many investors do you have?
Currently, we're at six. I've kept that low. That's our initial investment group. That's basically to purchase the land. Once we have the land secured, then we're gonna open up for more investment. So, but we'll keep it, we'll keep it to a minimum. It'll probably be thirty groups max. But those are set up as shares, shareholder groups, so. And we, as a private company, we can choose who those entities are. So that, our goal is to make sure that this stays local as long as we can, as humanly possible.
Yeah, you said, you said right now they are all local?
Yes, all Anthony Wayne graduates between nineteen ninety-six to two thousand and one, in fact. So, go class ninety-seven, right, Mark?
What, what community feedback have you heard, specifically anything negative about the project?
The good and bad about getting feedback is, I don't think anyone's afraid to give me negative feedback. I think people, I haven't received much negative feedback. That's kinda my worry. It's like, usually you receive, you know, at least ten percent negative feedback, but I think because of the process that we've gone through, like I said, this has been a five-year process now. And it started off with just talking to other parents with teams that were frustrated at playing, you know, starting a game at twelve-thirty in the morning with my eleven-year-old on a Friday night at a dome. And I'm like, this is ridiculous. We can, we can run this better, this can be more efficient. To where we are now, I mean, this is the sixth or seventh location that we've looked at seriously, but you know, things haven't panned out, obviously, and with each location comes different things that could be positive and negative. So I think we've worked through the process and it's taken long enough that we've kinda weeded out the negatives. Obviously, there's always gonna be someone that's not happy with whatever anyone's doing, so. And I can't do anything about that, but I haven't heard many negatives, so. That's my biggest fear. It's like, I'd rather hear the negatives upfront and try to deal with it or, you know, alleviate the questions that might be there or the concerns of, hey, you know, why are you building a dome versus this other building? That dome itself is close to the exact size of our phase one and will cost about the same as that, but it's less costly to maintain and do a lot more things in that size of dome. That'll bring in bigger sports that give more money, more revenue. So as we go through the phases, our revenue issue becomes less of an issue and allows us to do more things, more things that we can charge less for the community, you know. A long-term goal for me would be, you know, our Anthony Wayne Youth Foundation comes in at minimal cost and we're charging those costs to outside entities where it all favors Anthony Wayne, so.
Just to, people in the audience and people that are watching online, definitely reach out to us, let us know what the community's thinking. That's really, we've seen most of this before, but we really care what everyone thinks, so. Thanks for being here.
Thanks, Mike.
Yes, I think Don had a question also.
Yes, sir. In this type of enterprise? I've run my own facilities at a smaller scale. I've run them as nonprofit, though. And the frustration I've had in the past is, as a nonprofit, you're always running very close to margin and it's very, very difficult to get people to give up their time, their treasure, you know, that type of thing anymore. So I've run ventures, albeit on a smaller level, obviously, but we do have individuals that are, you know, COO of companies. We have people that are running insurance businesses where they are dealing with multimillion-dollar ventures. I myself am the business development director for my engineering firm. We bring in over twelve million dollars of business, well, each year. We're at about five to six million each year, so since I've been business development director, I've brought in over twelve million dollars worth of business. So I mean, I'm a sales and marketing, that's kind of my other background. So in terms of like running a company, we have plenty of people that have that experience. Running this type of venture, I don't think anyone has this experience. So you know, you're kinda flying by the seat of your pants until you know exactly about everything, but you learn as you go, obviously, but I couldn't, I couldn't just tell you that anyone's done this before because there's nothing like this. There's parcels of this, but in order for it to be worthwhile, I guess, long-term for a shareholder perspective, it needed to be a bigger vision. And once we started getting feedback from the local community, it was, hey, I know you wanna do this soccer and wrestling facility, but what about basketball? I can't get in a gym. And so there would be a shareholder, a potential shareholder. Like I said, we haven't, we've kept it limited for right now, but there are people waiting. I have twenty other entities, or whether it be families or local businesses that are wanting to jump in as investors right now, that whether they own their own business or operate large businesses as their employment. And like I said, like they've provided feedback into this and made this grow. When I first started, this was gonna be a smaller building and it's turned into something a lot larger because we've seen it's a need that needs to be addressed, so. But in terms of this type of facility, I don't have the experience doing it, but you know, I'm hoping I do well with it. But, but yeah, I mean, I don't think anybody has this experience, so. Did that answer your question? Yes, ma'am.
Just going on something that Mike had said in terms of comments that you have received from the community. A lot of people in the community don't know about this yet and I wonder if there's a way that you can better market this. You say you were in marketing. I think a lot of people need to be exposed to it. Knowledge is information and information is power, so I just wondered how you will address that.
So in September, I, we did a big, I don't know if you remember, there was a pickleball building that was trying to be built as well. The Mirror interviewed me. We laid out the entire plans back in September. That went out to, I know, I don't read The Mirror as much as other people, my parents do. You know, right away, they, I would say the older generation reads The Mirror, everybody else gets stuff from Facebook. We did some heavy, heavy marketing campaigns in the fall, but because we didn't have the land and because of the way that we're set up, my attorney basically said, hey, we need to turn this down a little bit, just because of the SEC filings and things like that. So that's the only reason that it hasn't been like, I'd be out there every day talking about this. And individually, when people stop me and ask me about how things are going, I'd talk to them for hours if I could. So it's been a lot of word of mouth just because of the way that we're structured and because as soon as you announce big plans, the cost of land typically goes up too, so. It's just kinda, so we've tried to keep it low-key and go through the back channels, I think the proper channels, before we like majorly introduce this, so. I think this is a public hearing. I mean, and, you know, I don't know how many people are watching from home, but I will say that all the- all the feedback I've gotten online, I, I haven't seen one negative comment. That's, again, that's the only worry I really have. I think it's a great venture. I think it's going to work out great. So, but yeah, that's my only view is I haven't received much negative.
But that's one of the reasons that we did have him present today also is because we've had conversations.
Yes.
Um, but I think it, that it is important. I think all of us feel that it's important, um, that if we, you know, even are taking any of this into consideration, that it's something that, um, you know, individuals needed to know about. And I think that's, um, trying to promote the transparency that we're trying to promote within the district.
And there, there are other parcels that, like I said, there are four other parcels, uh, around White House that we're still looking at.
No, don't come to White House.
But I, I, you know, this, in terms of our vision and the mission and long-term goals, you know, and being in, in terms of supporting Anthony Wayne Youth Foundation and Anthony Wayne High School Sports, there's not a better location than this location. I, I don't think, unless you're on campus, but that's not possible, so. Yes, sir.
No, I just wanted to say thanks as well. We have been, um, you guys presented back in, uh, February. The board was aware of it, so we all, we have all discussed already, and I think it's a great, uh, compliment to the area. And eventually you would be on campus, I think, you know, with the, the future expansion. We still have plenty of space. I was on the board years ago and we were able to purchase all this land, you know, for future planning.
Yes.
You know, years ago, and I think this is a perfect solution. It's, you know, it takes some of the, the burden from us having to build, build a facility.
Yes.
You know, we could easily justify saying we need to build something like this as a school, but for you to have to do it and take it off the taxpayer burden and still be able to utilize it, I think it's just a good fit. That I'd be in support of, I have been for the, for that, for that corner of land there, so.
And, and, and that's kind of what we were looking at. Like, this would naturally, and everything's blue and white if you haven't noticed.
Yeah.
So, um, and, and for a reason, like, the goal would be, you know, whenever the eventual new campus opens or is developed, that this would seamlessly, like, for outsiders, it would look like this is Anthony Wayne.
Sure.
Right? And, and in all intents and purposes, that's the use, end user is Anthony Wayne. Uh, now how we supplement that is we bring in outside money that's using the facilities as well, that allows us to, uh, to do the things that we want to do long-term. So, like, I, I'm just, to, me personally, as a member of the community and I've, I've been, I've lived here since nineteen eighty, eighty-three in Waterville. I left for eleven years, but I've been living in this community since that time. I'm tired of seeing, uh, our community investments and, and our, and our money going elsewhere. And, and them having that success that they have. I would like to see it be right here. That's just me personally. Um, I'm a big Homer. I've coached Anthony Wayne Sports since, uh, nineteen ninety-five, when I was a junior in high school. I was one of the first biddy coaches. I coached that guy back there when he was a sophomore in high school on the Anthony Wayne High School team. I was a wrestling coach here just as recent as two years ago, uh, and the biddy coach. So I, I'm here, my kids are here. I'd like to see Anthony Wayne succeed for as long as possible, uh, and this to be a joint venture. Uh, if anyone's been to a football game, you see how well that they, the local community supports it in terms of advertisement money and outside monies and, and sponsorships. That's how we see this working, is that the local community, I think, is going to support this to the point where that revenue side is not going to be my, my concern. Uh, the concern is going to be, how many more of these facilities do we need to build because it's going to be used all the time? You know, so, and that might not be here, be elsewhere, but, uh, but the, you know, the investment's going to be coming out of people from this area, uh, for this company, so. Any other questions?
Uh, yeah, well, one, again, thank you for, for all this. Again, I'm like Jeff and I believe everyone else on the board of, in support of something like this and things like that. Uh, what was your vision of when you want to get started? Have we already passed your, obviously, five years?
Two years ago.
Yeah, right. But, but with you looking at land and things like that, when are you guys looking as your deadline?
Basically, I, I'm sitting here as this is the land that we'd like to get, so it's going to be on your guys' terms at that point in terms of negotiation and, and timing. The best-case scenario is that we would have this purchased sometime this fiscal year. Um, and be able to break ground. You know, I'd like to get a lot of the site development done later this summer and, and fall so that we can break ground in the spring. Uh, we won't be able to break ground until March.
Sure.
Uh, this is all slab-on-grade construction, so it's not that big of an issue. Uh, but building reservoirs and things like that take time, EPA permits, there's a lot, like, you don't know, you don't know until you get to that point, right? And, uh, if anyone's ever been involved in a bureaucracy before, it, it takes time to do things, right? So, um, as a business, I'd like to do it today, you know, but it's really kind of on your guys' timeline. And obviously, I know you want to get feedback from the public, but the sooner the better, obviously. I, I'd like to have it built before my kids are out of school. I mean, I got a senior and a junior right now, but I also have a sixth grader, so I got some time, but uh, I'm not, I'm not moving anywhere, so, uh, but I, I, in terms of investment, we got this, this window of opportunity where we got to capture those investors locally so they don't do something else. Because that, there are people that are looking to build their own facilities right now. I don't know if you've noticed, Archibald just built one, Wasiyan's talking about it. Everyone's doing this and they're doing it through the school, kind of, like, we're trying to do it privately, which I think when you compare it long-term, you're going to see a huge difference in the way it's managed and run and, and, and how efficient it is, so.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Any other questions or, all right, I thank you guys for your time.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
And I, I'm going to stick around. If there's any other questions, anybody concerned, I'll be over here by the boards and whatnot, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then moving on, um, with the agenda. Uh, if you would notice, like, the, uh, information piece of the agenda, uh, we do have several individuals that we are changing, um, on the salary schedule and so forth due to additional, um, they've received additional, um, education. Uh, we have some that are, uh, you know, changing positions within the district, uh, you know, and so forth. And then you'll see also that, um, we're making the Director of Communications, uh, adjustments, uh, as far as that goes. And that's for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Because of adjusting the, um, contract a little bit, it does, um, actually would begin, um, on seven-one um, and then go through seven-thirty-one, uh, for, for this particular, uh, contract period. So, um, moving on from there, we do have some overnight trips, which we had shared the last time. But a lot of times you'll see that during this time of year due to camps. Um, or again, our DECA students and so forth, they are, uh, traveling, uh, in order to participate in, um, summer, a summer leadership retreat. Um, those are the things that take place during the summer that we are very excited to have our students involved in. And then, um, as well as our cheer team and our, and our girls' basketball team. When we talk about educational agreements, it's always in, important around this time of year to start making agreements to put in place in case, um, we need, uh, different placements for students or that we do need, um, transportation, um, due, again, those are all due to individuals being on IEPs or, um, special circumstances. And so we have, um, have agreements, uh, in item two and three that just allows us to, if we need to do that, um, we have those, we have those on standby now. The first one is basically just, um, providing, um, extended school year, uh, for a student. And that is, um, will be done through Bittersweet. So, again, and that's meeting the requirements of the IEP. On item D, we have the job description, um, for the gifted, um, as we worked, um, to determine, you know, uh, how Brian's, how Brian will be being utilized within the district this year and so forth. And we did, um, make some adjustments to that, uh, to that job description so that he, it has a clear understanding of, of, you know, what those, what that job entails and so forth. We also have the graduation approval. These are for individuals that either are possibly graduating a little early or graduating a little late. Um, if a student does not have all of the requirements met by the time we graduate, um, we will work with them to try to make sure that they do have, um, all the requirements met. And sometimes that means some additional work, um, at the end of the school year. Uh, because as long as they graduate before the start of the next school year, they are considered, um, graduates of twenty-twenty-five and, and that graduating class. But, um, these individuals that we have are, um, kind of fall in that category where they're being able to, um, still be recognized as the class of twenty-twenty-five.
Any questions, comments on those? If not, any emotion approved?
I'll move.
Jeff moves, Shelley seconds, and Carrie, when you're ready.
Mr. Baden?
Yes.
Ms. McKnight?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Stom?
Yes.
Superintendent Personnel Recommendations.
Um, notice that, uh, we have individuals that we have at this point, um, resigning, uh, from a position. We've had a couple of people that have, uh, made decisions to leave the district, um, and that's basically, uh, to take on other opportunities um, or, uh, you know, because of them moving out of the area, that type of thing. Um, so we do have, uh, several resignations or four resignations at the top. We also have then the employment where we've already started to fill those positions. I think that, uh, Dr. Kontet has shared that we've been very happy with the pool, um, for special education aides this year. And that's not always the case, so we're excited about that. Um, we are adding, uh, Michael Shea as a full-time bus driver. He's, he has been, um, a substitute driver for us and he is taking all, he is taking on, um, a full-time route. So I think the kids will enjoy that and they're excited about him in that position. Uh, and then we have filled also a secretary position and the study hall monitor, um, aide position, so. Substitutes, uh, you'll notice that we have individuals that, again, as I had shared earlier, at times we have students that have special needs, and so our staff at times need to be working with them also as extended school year um, to meet their, um, IEP requirements and so forth. And so we do have at the top, um, summer positions, and that is basically to, um, provide those ESY services. And then, uh, you also will notice that we have substitutes. Some of those substitutes include, um, the individuals that we use as tutors, um, four out of the five days in order to assist with intervention and, uh, providing services to students. And then we have our volunteers. Uh, this list is a little shorter right now because, of course, we don't need volunteers quite as much right now. Uh, and that will be, you'll see a large list of those as school starts back up. And then we also have our supplemental contracts. Uh, for example, we have, uh, two individuals that are going to be mentors. Uh, when a new student, or when a new, um, teacher is hired in, we do provide them, uh, a mentor to be, basically work with them and help them, um, in their transition. And then we have our, uh, coaches, our assistant coaches, track coaches, and we typically do not hire them until after their seasons are out, over, so. Those. And then again, at the limited supplemental contracts, as I shared, those are contracts, again, for individuals that do not already have positions within the district. And you can see, um, that those are all for, uh, different athletic positions, that we have athletic coaching positions. Uh, we do have a contract renew, uh, that, that you'll see, and then we also have our contract amendments. And that is all I have at this time.
Any questions, comments? If not, need emotion approved? Shelley, do I have a second?
A second?
Just a second. Carrie, when you're ready.
Mr. Baden?
Yes.
Ms. McKnight?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Stom?
Yes.
All right, moving on. Do we have board comments? None have been addressed, but does anybody have any comments? Fantastic. Uh, we didn't have anybody sign up to speak. Does anybody want to speak? Ray? All right. After that, then, uh.
I do have one thing.
Go ahead.
I did get confirmation, it's worth sharing, um, from the OASBO director, Katie Johnson, that they did not do away with the inside millage. So that is a huge, huge blessing to the Anthony Wayne community.
Good, good.
Very much so.
Glad to hear that.
She said there's more coming soon, but I don't know anything about the twenty-mil floor. We could still see a little bit of loss of revenue, but that was a huge one. Six-point-seven mil in dollars is a lot to us.
I guess just to comment on that too. I mean, that's, it's a huge concern because the state, I mean, they can kind of brag to say, okay, we took away property tax, but it doesn't take away the need. So then all the school districts have to go back to the community and say, okay, we had money, now we don't have money, and now we need to go put a levy on again, but.
It was going to create a lot of issues.
And it still could because it's not all.
It's not signed by the governor yet.
So, so is it fully, it, it's fully agreed on what they want to present? Like, it was back into committee.
Yes.
To discuss all these things, so they, they have finished.
They have finished. They're supposed to vote today.
So they still have to vote and still the governor still has to sign, but.
But at least the twenty mil, or the inside millage is not on the table to be voted.
We could still have the, the twenty-mil floor.
Could have issues with the twenty-mil floor, yes.
What's included, what's not. There were still some.
Yes, because.
What's considered emergency levies and that.
Right, so we're going to come off the floor if they did make a change because one of the things they were going to do is say that you have to include, um, your emergency levy.
Yeah.
So it would, we would now be, our emergency levy is one-point-seven-seven mils. And you can no longer have an emergency levy, so when that comes up for renewal, we have to renew it as current operating. Well, it's going to cost the taxpayers more.
Right.
That emergency levy that was passed in two thousand and three generates three million dollars today, and it did then. But back then, it cost four-point-eight-five mils. Now it's only costing one-point-seven-seven. Well, when you renew it, it's going to be based on current value, so it's going to cost them more money. And it, plus, it's not subject to the rollback credit. So, it's a lot of, I'm telling you, it, it has been crazy, what they were doing.
Yeah, and how the budget impacts, um, the district is always going to be individually for that district. Um, our biggest concern was because we knew that was over six million dollars of inside millage, that, that our biggest concern was that. And so it is a great relief knowing, um, you know, if there are other things that impact us, you know, then we will deal with that just as we would have if it would have been the inside millage. But knowing, um, that that is not at this time being impacted, I mean, that is a relief to us because that was our greatest concern due with our situation.
For two years, anyway.
Right.
For the next two, yeah.
Josh Williams shared that he would be coming out here and helping us market things if we, you know, depending on what happened. And I said, oh, yeah. So, but there's, there's still more to come, but I did want to share that that, that's a huge relief. But I don't know, they, she did say they added other things so too, so I don't know what that means yet, but I'm, I'll, that's a good thing.
We'll end on a high note.
Yeah.
Carrie, what, was there anything mentioned about the fair funding in that memo? In terms of like the Patterson, are they going to go back to that or?
I heard that they're keeping the fair funding, this, yes. I heard that they're keeping that. I don't know anything about the funding. So, the night that Josh Williams came to the meeting and spoke, um, he talked about how we would, well, we, he was saying how we'd be losing money because they were, you know, they proposed to take the guarantee out. But, so I don't know how any of this is going to work, but the House was, the House was proposing an increase. So we would see an increase there, and the Senate was even proposing an increase. So, I don't know how it's all going to work out, but six-point-nine million dollars is a, is, or seven million dollars is a, a relief based on that. Now, if they did something else, then I'll be back on the crazy train, so.
But, but we're hoping to be able to find out more information soon.
As soon as I know.
Until, yes, because it hasn't been published yet.
Yeah, I, I keep, she said that she would be sending an update soon and I haven't seen anything yet. I keep checking, so.
I know, it changes every day. I read it every day. It changes.
Yep, still nothing. So, I'm anxious, so.
All right. With that, do I have emotion to adjourn?
I will move.
Hey, Mike moves. Do we have a second? Shelley seconds when you're ready, Carrie.
Mr. Baden?
Yes.
Ms. McKnight?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Stom?
Yes.
Thank you guys for coming.